We're counting, we've got Councilman Rowland, Councilman Jones, all those opposed? Okay. Those who want to pass, okay, discuss City of Purview two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budgets. Just type it in, correct that one on the item. The first portion in that would be the mayor's summary to the council and the public, and I'll skip through it because it's quite a big, we've been blessed with a lot of activity, but I want to make sure I touch on what may be of interest. To members and residents and visitors and guests, I'm pleased to submit from the department head this proposed fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty operating budget for five million eight hundred seventy-two thousand dollars, as opposed to last year's budget of five million four hundred thousand, increase of just under half a million dollars. The budget is a plan of financial operations involving an estimate of proposed expenditures for this fiscal period and the proposed means of financing for the City of Purview, Texas. The needs of each department, you know, the other department head took a look at what actually happened, what was on last year's budget, the whole nine yards. So again, I'll summarize that to get through to the city two thousand nineteen taxable assessed property valuation increased from a hundred and thirty-four million rounded up to over a hundred ninety-four million. Because of the assessed valuation increase, there's no proposed increase in the property tax rate, so it's remained the same. And the budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of over four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, which is a forty-five percent increase over last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is just over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And again, I'll be summarizing, crime control intervention, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Primary will help fund the police department, street maintenance sales tax. A quarter percent of the city's sales tax goes for the street maintenance. It increased over forty-three thousand this year compared to last year. The city's sales tax is a one percent city sales tax with general administration funding, an increase of over a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Franchise taxes and permits, the proposed amounts of franchise fees, three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in permits, ninety-six thousand, decrease of just under four thousand from last year. The mayor will head the general administration department. The mayor has been serving as the public works operations manager. The new public works operations manager will be hired during the new fiscal year. The mayor's been serving as the emergency management director, the city's building official, the city's army officer, assisting with ordinance violation enforcement, and as administration, currently the administrator of the police department. While we're finalizing hiring a new chief of police, which we expect to do so very soon. A new city secretary's been hired, a new treasurer's been hired. Two full-time city administrative assistants are available to assist with various city administrative activities. Municipal court is staffed with one full-time judge, Alexander Simmons, who also serves as a court administrator, and two full-time clerks. Judge Simmons serves as the presiding judge, court administrator, department head of municipal court, as well as city disaster recovery coordinator. Does a great job of assisting us with FEMA claims and that sort of thing. I want to thank her for that, that's you, child. Managing the city's website, telephone, electronic mail system helps a lot with our technology. She assists the mayor in training city employees and in developing and updating our policies and procedures, and is very supportive throughout our city, various departments. The police department staff will consist of a police chief, a sergeant detective, and ten full-time patrolmen. Five part-time officers from last year will be replaced with full-time officers. One patrolman will serve as warrant code enforcement officer. It includes court bailiff duties and assists with code enforcement as well. The public works department will be administered by a new public works manager. Currently, the mayor serves as a public works manager. The department is made up of one part-time and four full-time operators and a billing clerk. And the city is contracted with U.S. Water Service, USW, to provide compliance support to the public works operation. The city is currently in dispute, as many of you know, in Prairie and in University over the wastewater sewer treatment rate that the university is charging. We had a meeting as recent as a few hours ago, and we're gaining ground on trying to wrap up that situation. The James Muse Parkway project is included in this budget. The projected cost is one million five hundred thousand, two hundred dollars. Grant funds should total one million forty-six thousand, and the difference of four hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred will be the city match obligation. City employee benefits, the city participates in the Texas municipal retirement system for the city's full-time employees. Debt service, the collection of property taxes provides a debt service revenue. The total debt service revenue projected to be four hundred and one thousand, eight hundred dollars. Included in the debt service is the acquisition of new land at a cost of two hundred thousand dollars with a five percent interest rate over seven years. The other debt finance items would be several new police and public works vehicles, tractors for public works, and things of that nature. The economic development for B Corporation, the City of Purview Economic Development. B Corporation will continue to explore the expansion of the economic development within the City of Purview. Total projected revenue is over three hundred and seventeen thousand, increase over last year of just under eighty-four thousand. The upcoming fiscal year will be a very busy year for the city. I'm looking forward to continuing the very active and progressive path that the city administration has chosen to follow. Here's my hope that this budget is an accurate reflection of the thinking of the city council and is consistent with the wishes of the citizens of Purview. Councilman Jones?
The last part here before he talks about amendment four B. Is it, up to my understanding, that usually we approve of their budget at the same time of approving our budget? So, to my understanding with that, in other words, hindered us?
Well, yeah, so it doesn't invalidate your budget. It just makes their budget, they can't expend funds until it comes to the city council and the city council approves it. So it will hinder their budget until they approve it.
So they can approve it later, but before they spend anything, it's?
Yeah, they can't spend any money in between the end of their fiscal year and when you approve it. But it doesn't stop you from approving your own budget. They just can't spend any money in the meantime.
Item four, discussing take action on city council budgeting, set aside two hundred thousand. It's always counsel's pleasure on the budget.
I have some change, some things I want to ask some questions. So if we could start with page?
If I might, Ms. Bynum, Nora, myself have a copy of it, and if you're going to actually make amendments to it for her purposes, she's going to have to have it for the record. Is this today's? Mr. Johnson? Well, he changed it from yesterday, so I don't know when you got that. Just want to make sure she's correcting the right one to go on the real file.
There's two sets. Are there two sets, are you saying?
No, we have.
Okay, counsel, counsel Rowland.
So when we go to... Mr. Johnson? Yes, sir. On page four. You put the contingent on page four. Is this where, I guess this is a question for attorney? On that item for between page four and page nine, we had a conversation yesterday in reference to officers and the amount of vacant positions that we kind of had based upon the officers up until today. I see that you moved those, that amount into the contingent. Question I have for attorney, yes, attorney Griffin. The asterisk, is that where we would now need to include the information? Or would we just refer to that into the intra-budget paperwork? So on this paper, would we need to make that statement in reference to contingent? If we say, if we make the statement about contingent, like the contingent items, is that a general or that has to be on each, whether it be general fund, police department, public works, or whatever it may be?
So if you're looking to have contingent line items come back to the city council prior to approval, if, as long as each of the contingency line items are listed as contingency and it's quite clear, that would be adequate. It would be more clear if you also put it in the document itself just for clarity. But it would be effective if it was only in the core document.
All right. So, Ms. Johnson, so thank you for putting that. Did we discuss the building official? I'd like to move that, since we don't have a position description and we don't have a current position, I'd want to move that forty thousand into the contingent. Into the contingent and within general fund. Now, Ms. Johnson, you put contingent and you put police. And I'd rather, attorney, is it, should we have contingent for each addition or just one total contingent section within general fund? So if you look on page four.
Right.
There's a contingent police patrol, which means we're just moving it from one item and putting it into the contingent. If we wanted to add the building official into that contingent? So the question is, do you have one contingent? Or do you have contingent for each of the items?
Typically, you would have it for each of the separated departments, in other words. So that would not be the same. However, since if you're, if the council chooses to make the amendment in the core document itself, that all contingency items have to come to city council prior to that. At the time it came to city council, you could put it into a line item. So, you know, I can't, I don't know how they're going to vote, so I can't tell you that. But if you're looking for that to be contingent, I would put it contingent building official, just like you did for the police officers.
I'd like to get that moved.
No, I could just add the contingent to it.
Yep, that's it.
Yes, sir.
So yesterday, when we looked at all sheet, patrolmen, we was having an argument as, or the discussion as of hearing that officer was hired last week, but listed on here, this says either or. So how does that work?
Okay, remember, we talked about from that list, one of those persons would be moved up to the detective?
They may be moved up.
Right, exactly. So we don't know which one will be moved up. So I just had to put either or.
But who?
Okay, can I just stop you right there? In your conversations yesterday, my understanding is that this was for your discussion purposes, so that you could kind of figure out what was going on. The actual budget, you need to make a motion to delete the names. Names do not belong in a budget. So it would be the position, in other words.
No, understand, just remember what we said. We know that you have one position that's made for the sergeant detective. Okay, no one, the sergeant detective would be, would come from one of those particular persons. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
You told the mayor that the only way where he, what was proposed in our budget, that the only way that that would work is if one of those officers had moved up to the sergeant detective. Which he said, which the mayor said, that's a possibility. But the way we have the list here, that's two positions. That's two names.
I know, but if you do what you just said, just take the names off. Just take the names off.
But we need to see if we need to add additional patrolmen.
You're going to have to add additional patrolmen, is what I'm saying. If you just take the names off, you don't have a problem. As far as the number of patrolmen, the number of staff with police departments is exactly what you see there.
We would have, because what the council has said that we would like to do is that the number of police officers that we already have, we keep there. And then with the police chief, plus additional officers.
To answer your question then, what I have to do is just move one of those other, move one more officer over into the contingent.
Okay, yes, sir.
Is that what you guys want?
Yes, I have something in addition to that. On the detective that we currently don't have a person. I would like to move that fifty-eight thousand into the contingent.
Okay, well, that was the one he was speaking of.
No, he was speaking of the officer.
Well, I'm saying, that's the position I'm going to move over, because that was the position that the other person was going to be moved to. So it's the same thing.
Okay, that's done, that's.
So that's actually saying that five people now be in the contingent?
No, four. So it's the three, that's already there, which is the one forty-seven. And then you're going to add the fifty-eight.
So look, when you talk about this, it would be five.
Yes.
Because it's two for one position.
Rodriguez White.
Understand why I put two there. You're not understanding why I had two there. It's not two people. I had to do that because that's what he had on staff and the, and the...
But let's just, let's just be clear on what council wants moved. That's what we need to clarify.
I'll move the one.
They want to move, move it.
So that's five slots that we want?
No, that's four over there now.
Five, so it's?
So one patrol, one patrolman is already working. I, I moved. Yes, the patrolmen that are working, look at this. They're all listed, you're not keeping them.
No, I'm keeping them, but you know that this is messed up.
No, all right, look.
I'm keeping them, you know that this is messed up.
No, it's not messed up, you're not understanding what I'm trying to tell you. So what we talked about yesterday was that one of those persons conceivably could get moved into that other position.
Yeah, but let's go back to yesterday.
Go ahead.
When we reviewed yesterday, we had one slot and we had an officer that just joined the task force.
Right.
Now, what you're telling us today is that there was two officers that joined the task force. Yeah, it was because this either or wasn't there yesterday.
I know, I know. But we said, when we said the additional officer, that meant that we were going to move one of those up. We didn't say who. But all y'all, all you do now is take the names off.
So the question, question I have.
Go ahead.
All right, we have, so we have Officer White is working.
Right.
We have Officer Ross is working.
Right.
Officer Inglis is working.
Right.
Officer Watson is working.
Right.
Officer Jen is working.
Right.
Officer Mosley is working.
Right.
Now, you have Officer Rodriguez or Gray. Which one of the two are working?
Those two are working.
All right, now, how can they be working in our budget? We have one who's gray, but is Officer Rodriguez working?
Yes.
Okay, so that's just one. So how do we have, do you, do you get what I'm, a number nine has two people in one slot?
I know, but because yesterday we said that one of those. Well, we don't know yet. Well, it's a salary for the position.
What he's saying from yesterday at least is the vacant sergeant detective slot. We said, no, it's not would be, he said, we said maybe.
Maybe, right, maybe.
We can't say that, but that's the revenue speaking.
So if we come on, if they're both currently working today and they're both listed in the same slot for the budget, right, they have to get paid somewhere.
Right, the question, two, there's two questions that arises. How is one working? And then one that is working? And so we're saying, I just wanted to count how many full-time officers we currently have so we can cap the number. That's all, I didn't want to put names. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We agree that we have seven officers plus the possible who we're supposed to, which would have made it eight. But we have seven officers as we know it. Now, the reason for that is because we also have three pending that the mayor said he was going to interview for. And then he had moved forward and had Gray. Now, that's four. Now, we're saying that we're going to take the salary for those four. So you got three in contingent. We're going to add one more, which is four, and then we're going to add the detective.
Stay right there, stay right there. If, if, if we don't move any of those up to detective, then you have to subtract one of the, add Gray to the other patrolman.
So that's what we're saying.
So you're going to have two patrolmen.
So we're saying, we're budgeting for what we're, what we have moving forward. Currently, is Gray currently part of the police department and getting paid? So that's a, that's one, that's a question. Is Officer Gray sworn in officer and getting paid for the City of Purview? And if not, why are we budgeting for him to do that? So again, we have the positions, let's, let's take, so let's, let's put Officer Unknown, because it's not about a person. All I'm saying is, if we have four officer slots, if he comes on, he will go into the slot that we're saying we have. The only thing we're doing right now is identifying the current officers that we have and identifying them in a position. And the remaining money that we want to support the police department with, that we're going to put in a contingent. And when we go through the process, money would be allocated for each officer once we get the information for each officer. So we're, so councilman is asking for that we have seven full-time officers currently, that we continue to have that budget. The remaining money would go into? The contingent. Now, you're saying, what you're saying, which we haven't got the answer to, is we have an additional officer, whether he is working or not, what is going to happen?
All right, to clarify that, from what you just said, the question comes in about Officer Gray. Is he currently, is he currently working? Has he been sworn in? I don't, if that's the case, then Officer Gray's name comes off of that token.
All right. Now, what now, is that two positions?
No, no, there's only one position. So Rodriguez, just say Gray's name off completely.
So just for clarification, that means we have seven, we're budgeting for seven full-time officers?
Actually, six. Remember, White is code enforcement warrant and bailiff officer, so he's not in.
But is it, I wasn't talking, so I'm glad you said that. Not in the patrol perspective, but he's an officer. And he's just assigned to municipal court. And so when we look at officers, we're counting officers, which means he should be included. So I'm saying, so unless we're taking him and going to pull it out of municipal court, and right now in this budget is in the police department, right? And so I count seven. And then we're saying that we're going to move, we have three positions that's going to move to contingent, which are currently there, and then we're going to move detective to contingent. The police chief will stay because that position is already posted and we, and the mayor has already, is going through the process to hire that. Those are the two things that I have.
So I'm going to move the sergeant detective over?
The fifty-eight thousand into the contingent of the police and then the building official contingent.
Right, okay.
Next issue, councilman?
I'm sorry, I want to make sure that we got this right. So in contingency, that is sergeant detective and that's the fifty-eight thousand?
Yes.
Contingency is going to go to?
And then is that three or four?
The new number.
He has three there, that number will stay the same.
That would stay the same.
One forty-seven.
That was fifty-eight.
The others fifty-eight?
Yes.
Even? Okay, that's going to go to?
And then we have the contingent for the building official.
All right, that's going to go to two oh five. Building official, I'll put contingency by that, okay?
Next item, councilman?
Oh, public. Public work?
Public work.
Okay.
Yesterday was discussed that we put the money over that we thought that we just wanted to use the USW, whatever that number was to be able to?
It's there, the forty-two thousand?
Yeah, general fund, what?
No, page ten.
Page ten?
No, no, your pages are different from mine. Look under public works.
I think you're talking about fifteen.
Fifteen.
Oh, so you already took the other?
Yeah, I took the column.
Now, the question is, did we get answered? Because we had this person's name who was not this person on public works.
I'm going to take names off.
Take names off? So, so did we ever figure out, were we, remember, we're talking about licenses and da-da-da?
Yeah, that's part of the strategy, that our people will go through and get trained.
All right, and so? Again, um...
Well, anything else from Councilman Wallace and the Doc? Make sure we rotate around. Where's, hold on just a second, so let me get some other councilmen. Councilman Williams?
My, where is the debt for?
Debt service?
Yeah.
Oh, just go to debt service.
So it's one, would it be in public works and would it be in the item in reference to revenue?
It would be in debt service.
JJ, where's the seven-year plan at?
Seven-year plan is not, when you say seven-year plan?
When we was talking about paying the university's back, we like came up.
Oh, oh, that's in, that's in the, under public works? That's included in the principal payment that you see, so the debt principal payment? And in the interest, the two components will be interest and debt principal. You see debt principal payment around seventy, seventy thousand, seven hundred? It's included in that number.
So within seven years, we?
Yeah, right, right, that's going to be a proposal. And then the interest part will be under the interest line item on the, on the... The page before that, but it's on the interest, it's on the same page.
On sixteen, what line item is that?
What's that? Interest, interest on bank loans, you see twenty-two thousand, four hundred. See, those two components make up the debt payment.
That's page fifteen.
Right. And what we propose to the university is included in there, the one-year portion. And also, we have forecasted under wastewater and amount equal to what we currently paying, full amount that we're currently paying. I mean, we're currently being billed, put it that way. The what now? Wastewater, what's that? We look at? Oh, what did you say? Yeah, you're not going to see the full amount, it's just one-year amount.
Where's the, where's the one-year?
The one-year amount, I just told you, the principal part.
Right, you said it's under what?
It's under, if you look at debt principal payment, debt principal payment, you see forty-eight, forty-eight thousand, five hundred. That's the principal portion, which includes not only the university, but the trucks that we have in public works. And the interest part is on the page before that, under the line item that says interest bank loans. It's included in that, that total.
So am I the only one thinking, so would like that to be separate?
No, it has to be separate. What do you mean?
The debt principal payment, what is the breakout? You're saying?
Oh, we have the breakout in the detail.
We should, yeah, where is that?
I can give you all.
What I'm saying, if I look at this, and I look at the budget again, I should be able to say that?
What's that? Well, what you have to, when you want detail like that, I can provide you with that detail. Because in the budget, you summarize the line item.
So this budget is open record, right?
Pardon?
So the budget is open record, right? So if somebody comes off the street and she wants to go and look at the budget, they should be able to look at this and say, we're paying X amount for this debt and then X amount. I think?
It's listed, if you look at, look at what the mayor read from. The debt service was listed, the public works, we haven't listed the details. But we do have the detail in the summaries that we put, how we put that, that line item together. And what we can provide you with is what we wanted for debt. We can provide you with a separate schedule to show, and show what's paid, what's the remaining balance.
What he's asking, is the basic, or, excuse me, I want to speak from. A basic amount that says that our debt for X, Y, and Z, which happens to be the university, what is that number?
Oh, okay. Look at your balance sheet, look at your balance sheet. It's on your balance sheet in the financial. That's about, as far as what the remaining balance of. It, it won't be in, in a revenue expenditure, but...
So you got a balance sheet, there's a breakdown.
That's separate from a revenue expenditure.
So, what you said is, the one year for the seven-year plan is including the debt principal payment, right? That's this.
It's included in.
And you said, if that's included in that, it's going to be, we'll be paying for the utility trucks, we pay to the university.
Right.
What I'm saying is...
What's that?
Those are separate debts, so they should be listed as separate debts.
They are listed, if you look at your balance sheet, that's where you'll see, that's not your balance sheet.
Okay.
No, you, you don't have that when you're presenting the revenue expenditure budget.
It's the budget, and then the balance sheet breaks down portions of the budget, right? They don't really get...
Okay. On the...
What I'm, what I'm saying is...
I know what you're saying.
Mr. Perry, I'm going to use you for an example.
Please do.
If Mr. Perry comes into the city hall and he wants to see the budget, what are we going to handle?
That's what you're going to give.
We're going to handle this, right?
That's what he has now, right.
Right. So, if, if, if he has a question about the debts...
Then we can answer it. Then he has to give a specific question. If he comes in and say, I want to know what's the breakout of the debt, then we can give it to him.
Well, let me, let me, let me help, because I understand where council is going. Because it's generally accepted accounting principles. What you're looking at is like, say, say, take utilities, right? If, we would have to break utilities out and say, how much is the city hall? How much is in each of the nine, ten lift stations? Even with the telephone bill. How much other officers' phone bills? How much of it is the general admin? How much of it is municipal court? That's done in a separate document. Here, the totals accumulate.
Right.
Okay.
So the reason why I'm asking for what I'm asking for is...
All right, I'm looking at it right now.
The debt that we owe to the university is a substantial debt.
Right.
It is a, it is a, it, for me as a citizen and as a, as a, as a taxpayer, somebody who wants to know about the city's debts, specifically the, the large substantial amounts of debt, I want to be able to go pull up the budget and see where the city is paying off this debt.
You can see that.
You can't, not from here, you can't.
Hold on, Ms. Johnson.
Okay.
This is a twelve-month budget.
Right.
And it may be a fifteen-year...